So I'm gonna go ahead and call the regularly scheduled Granberry City Council meeting together to order. It is 6:00 PM. It is Tuesday, August the 19th, 2025, and we are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas. Pastor Dooley, if you would start us off with the invocation, we'd all appreciate it. We'll stand and then we will do the pledges immediately after. Thank you, sir.
May I pray to God for your presence and we thank you for your many mercies. Thank you for every good gift and every perfect gift that comes from above. For health and strength, family, friends, humanities and freedoms we enjoy in this state across this country. And we look to you for direction for our governance over our city, our county, our country. We pray for our councilors, that you give them a love for all that is good and right and true. We pray that you impart to them a pursuit of law for justice and equity and goodness in your sight. We pray that this might lend itself to human flourishing in our community for the benefit of all, and ultimately to the honor and glory of your name. So we amend ourselves to your care and your watchfulness. In the name of our Jesus, we pray.
Amen. Now join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Just an idea, okay? It might be a mercy. Okay, let's go up here, right to the top. Yeah. All right. I'm gonna move right to proclamations, presentation. City Council, City Manager issued encouraging statements to recognize city staff, and I'll say thank you to Ms. Burwell one more time for making sure that we have that on the agenda every council meeting. So, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I wanted to recognize a new success that our newest employee in the IT radio department has successfully completed. Tony Azell has successfully completed his P-25 implementation certificate. This is a three-week class that he has to go through, and it's rigorous skills assessment and assimilated environment at the L-3 Harris Training Center in Virginia. Tony is now authorized to program public safety radios on the Granberry Regional Radio Network, and that is a very important step in supporting our first responders. So, Tony, I think you're here. Stand up. Thank you so much. Congratulations. We appreciate you getting on board and being a great team member here. Looking forward to many years of you serving with us. Thank you. I also want to mention something that goes unnoticed. Our fire department continually answers calls. It's unbelievable. I've been kinda watching. I get a note when they're paged out. I get a page just like they do. And four to five fire calls a day last week, and those occur at all different hours of the day. Recently, we had a fire in the county, and our department was able to respond. Unfortunately, we lost two citizens in that fire, and I read the report today, and it's quite heartbreaking to see what occurred. But our firefighters were there in spite of the obstacles before them in the whole process and worked their tail off in the middle of the night to try to save those people, and it just didn't happen. And we regret the loss of our citizens out in the county. We are saddened by that. But most of all, I want to end on a high note that our firefighters were out there at 1:00 in the morning, paged out in the county, putting out a fire with not enough water because water trucks couldn't get there. It was quite disappointing to see the end result with the two fatalities and, of course, the house completely gone. But our firefighters fought a good fight. They did all they could in spite of the circumstances. So my hat is off to our firefighters and what they do for us and as they try to protect and service. So there's a lot of obstacles out there when you're going out there and there's not a firefighter to tie onto, or miscommunication through the radio system, through dispatch, or whatever may be going on, the scene, misinformation of organization, of people coming and going because of misinformation. So it's very important that we support our firefighters even in the bad times as they suffered through this loss. And I know that there's a mental toll that goes with that. These are things that happen in people's lives they live with forever. They rescue those deceased people, put them on an ambulance, and send them to the hospital regardless of whether they were gonna live or not. They treat them as if they were going to. So tough stuff, tough medicine for our folks, and we need to encourage those people as they continue to serve us. So pray for them. It's a tough role to carry that mental the rest of your life with you and what you experience and see, whether it's an automobile crash, having to cut someone out of a vehicle with extrication tools, you know, removing their, cutting away the seat belt, removing that person, whether they're conscious or unconscious, and dealing with that, and children, what they're exposed to in that way. And you know our police officers are out there with them, and they see that as well. So keep that mental health aspect on your mind as you're encouraging our firefighters and our first responders and our police officers and the EMS workers. It's tough, so I just wanna thank them for what they do. That's all I got.
Others? Comments? I really can't add to that except that two read the report, and Mr. Kaufman did not mention that the firemen went into a burning building with zero visibility when they went upstairs. There was zero visibility because of the smoke in the room as they tried to find the individuals that were in the room at that point in time. It, yeah, you can't read it without having the feelings that I know each of you do. So, yes, I'll give you another chance. Anything? Okay, good. We're gonna move right on then to public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items, and since you have a chance to talk on everything, because we don't have a public hearing, nobody took the chance, I won't read all this then. On the consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are routine, previously discussed items, and will be approved with one motion. Should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. I think we have about three items or two items, and they're both listed there. Anybody want to pull anything off? Okay. We would, I would talk just a second about the council, the city rule, or the city council rules of procedure. We've had rules of procedure for, I guess, forever with our deadline, but one of the things that we've always done is have to meet that, is the notice as to when the meetings are noticed and when they can be made public. And that means that the people up here and all of Chris and his city staff have to get the materials in to the city secretary in a timely manner. That timely manner is now, what, two weeks? Two weeks before the meeting. And that's not because we're being hard to work with up here, it's because the state legislatures have decided that that's the best for us. It's not. I mean, things happen, and we need to be able to be very quick and very reactive to those in and in a timely manner, but we keep getting pushed back to, seems like just unreasonable, unreasonable and things that just absolutely have not been thought through. This is one of those places where literally, you know, until you've walked in the shoes of these people up here, you don't know it's near, because it gets, you got people pushing at you from all different directions, and the state legislature, which you would think would be helping you tremendously, is not always that helpful. We'll keep working with them, though. Okay. Do I hear a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Corgan makes the motion. Mr. Oberdehrer, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, so we will go ahead and pass that one 6-0. Looking at the audience and understanding what we have coming up, I am gonna go ahead and move 7.3, which is considering approving the Granberry Cultural Arts Commission recommended art design for the Granberry Regional Airport Terminal Art Project with a project budget not to exceed $17,000 funded by private donation and the Cultural Arts Commission 2025 budget, GCAC Airport Submission Bill McGrath Proposal and Design. I'm gonna go ahead and move that one up, and I'm also gonna move up 7.4 as long as Tammy's here with us. We'll just keep you at the podium.
I get to go first. Excellent. Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, and Council. We're here tonight to ask the council to consider approving the Granberry Cultural Arts Commission recommended art design for the Granberry Regional Airport Terminal Art Project with a project budget not to exceed $17,000, and it's funded by a private donation in the Cultural Arts Commission budget. A little background, the Granberry Cultural Arts Commission, in collaboration with the Granberry Regional Airport and Visit Granberry, initiated an open art call to commission a signature installation for the new airport terminal. The goal is to create a welcoming placemaking piece that reflects Granberry's culture, our character, and hospitality to visitors as they arrive by air. And I do not want to steal the thunder of the commission itself, so what I'd like to do is first invite up our Chair, Mariella Riley, and let her explain to you the long process that this took, because they get a lot of credit for working hard to bring this before you tonight. So first, I will bring up Mariella. She will go through the process, and then I can answer any questions, and I believe we'll hear from Cody as well. So thank you. Mariella?
Thank you, Tammy, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and Mr. City Manager. I almost said Mr. Kaufman. Before I begin, I would like to have all the commission members present to stand to be recognized. Would you please? We are a hard-working commission. The Cultural Arts Commission is proud to have led this exciting project from the start. Our progress began with an open call for artists, which drew an impressive 40 submissions from a diverse group of talented individuals. We carefully reviewed all entries and narrowed the field to three finalists based on creativity, connection to Granberry's culture, and suitability for the airport's environment. On August 4th, 2025, the commission unanimously selected the designs titled "Clouds of Granberry" and "Granberry Wind Wave" by artist Bill McGrath. We believe these pieces beautifully capture the spirit of Granberry and will create a welcoming and memorable experience for all who visit the airport. This has truly been a collaborative effort involving the commission, the airport, and Visit Granberry, and we are excited to move forward with this meaningful addition to our community's cultural landscape. The Turnkey Project is totaled at $15,525. The commission requests a 9% contingency allowance of $1,475, bringing the total not to exceed project budget to $17,000. Funding sources include a $10,000 private donation and the balance from the Cultural Arts Commission 2025 budget. Now, I would like to ask Airport Director Cody Mathis to come to the podium for his update on our recommendation. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor Jarrett and City Council. It is my pleasure to support Granberry Wind Wave and Clouds Over Granberry, artful expressions of the very physical elements of flight that will be an attractive addition to an already inviting fixed-based operation at our Granberry Regional Airport. Designed by Chicago-area sculptor Mr. Bill McGrath, the piece will be constructed as a double feature of sorts, which will begin on the building's exterior in the form of an impressive pedestal-mounted abstract cloud formation constructed from the very elements that are employed in the assembly of aircraft fuselages themselves. As the viewer transits past this exterior sculpture and opens the facility's doors, their eyes will be immediately drawn to the FBO ceiling as their experience transitions from an outdoor presence flowing seamlessly to a continuation of the cloud expression hanging above their head in a manner of an indoor presence. Through a very generous private donation from a member of Granberry's general aviation community and the financial support of the Granberry Cultural Arts Commission, these art pieces will be the ultimate complement to an already beautiful airport facility, and I'm delighted to express my support for Mr. McGrath's proposal as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council, do we have questions for the comments? No other comments? There were some comments earlier in the week about the checkerboard, and it was explained to us that that's actually just the inability to make it transparent. So there are five of those, right? Five clouds or airy?
I believe there's five, yes.
Five? And the outside, and the outdoor sculpture as well?
Yes, I think it'll flow beautifully.
And I know there were some questions about how does, how do we keep it clean? How do we keep it looking new and all that? And I believe those questions...
Very simple. About every five years, a light washing with Dawn and water is all it needs, and for the one outside, and the inside should just be dusting.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll volunteer for the first cleaning.
Okay.
Okay.
We will mark that down.
Oh, I didn't mean that. Absolutely. Okay. Council?
Great questions.
Okay.
I'd like to add...
Yes, sir.
...a little color. I'd like to thank the Cultural Arts Commission for going through this process. So to my knowledge, this will be our number two project. Our first project was the art sculptures out, right outside our building here. So congratulations for putting this together. I know that we've been looking forward to some kind of an art piece to hang from that dome ceiling. Since before, it was gonna be a airplane, a small airplane was gonna hang from that ceiling. This is probably a better and more attractive piece than an airplane, so looking forward to that. And thank y'all for working through this process. This is not an easy process. I just can't explain it enough to the public. The ordinance requires them to procure all this ideas and come up with art projects for our community and vet it out, and then bring it to the council for consideration for approval. That's a good process. At the end of the day, we can all say we worked together, and everybody's happy with what we're doing, and that's why it's there, is so that everybody, at the end of the day, will be happy with what happens. But it is a laborious process, and it takes a lot of effort on your part and a lot of patience. So thank y'all, Arts Commission, for taking care of us that way.
Yeah, thank you very much. So council, do I hear a motion to approve or disapprove 7.3 as written?
So moved.
To approve.
To approve.
To approve.
Second.
And Mr. Oberdehrer, seconds. Mr. Woodley made the motion. Mr. Oberdehrer, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, so that will pass 6-0. Thank you and congratulations. Looking for, by the way, when is it? When will it happen? When will it happen?
Right away, the artist is, I think he already has his airplane reservations. He could cancel if you voted no, but he does have his airplane reservations.
Great.
Into the month, yes.
Oh, super.
Yes, so we're excited. Thank you so much.
Okay. Well, let's just move right along to 7.4, where we consider adopting Resolution Number 25-12, evidencing support of Visit Granberry's application for the Tourism Friendly Community designation through the Office of the Governor and the Economic Development and Tourism Division. So, Mr. Kaufman?
I'll let Tammy keep running with it. That's why we move these up.
Thank you again. Thank you. The Texas Governor's Office Economic Development and Tourism Division offers the Tourism Friendly Community Designation to recognize cities that actively promote tourism and create a welcoming environment for visitors. Achieving this designation would provide Granberry with statewide recognition, additional promotional opportunities, and potential priority consideration for certain tourism-related initiatives and programs. One requirement of the application is a formal resolution of support from the city council or mayor affirming the city's commitment to tourism as a vital component of our local economy. Visit Granberry meets the program's criteria and is seeking council's approval to include the city's resolution in the official application to the governor's office. City staff request that city council's consideration and approval of a resolution in support of Visit Granberry's efforts to obtain this Tourism Friendly Community Designation. This resolution is a required component of the application process and demonstrates our city's commitment to promoting tourism, especially as an important economic driver. There is no financial impact to this. We have been accepted into the program and completed all of the steps. This should be our final step and then our final interviewing process. So we thank you. We are also seeking letters from other community members, but this being the most important.
Great. Council, questions, comments for Ms. Dooley? No? No? Okay. Mr. Kaufman, anything you'd like to add?
I think this is an incredible opportunity for our community, and this is a new certification that we're seeking, and we are excited. We've already got the music-friendly city and the film-friendly city, and now we're seeking the tourism city, so certification. So I think this is a good hat-trick for us.
And there are four of us? Four?
There's another one called Digital...
Digital Friendly.
And I've been looking into that, and I don't think we wanna chase that just yet. We're not, we're not animation yet, so we'll figure that out.
That'll be next.
Yeah. Council? Do I hear a motion to adopt the Resolution Number 25-12 as laid out here in 7.4?
So moved.
Mr. Oberdehrer makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Hallam makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Okay.
Thank you.
It passes at 6-0. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this together, and thank you again, Arts Commission, for, I know this is work, for all the work you do. Excuse me. Okay. Well, in the concept of, you know, we've been to the airport, we're flying high with the other one, we'll go ahead and consider the approving the purchase of two SkyTrak telehandlers with Kirby Smith Machinery, and in the amount of $419,566 utilized in the Byboard Cooperative Contract Number 685-22, and these are for the wastewater treatment plants. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is on here for equipment for the wastewater treatment plants. At this time, I'll turn it over to Chester Nolan, our Public Works Director, to walk us through this agenda item, and he might as well stay up there, because we've got another agenda item next, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The piece of equipment that these two items will be replacing has been in place for in excess of 20 years. It's pretty well worn out. These SkyTrak handlers are utilized to move sludge containers around. We pull pumps with it. We set motors, any number of different things within the wastewater treatment plant. The purchase of two is for, one for the south plant and one for the east plant that's under construction. Total price is $419,566. The telehandlers have a capability of reaching 53 feet in height and 38 feet in horizontal movement. It's a pretty handy piece of equipment, and the folks out at the plant will greatly utilize them and appreciate having this after having to fight with the existing piece of equipment to keep it running and going. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer about it.
I might add to that a little bit. This is, this is just equipment basically for the wastewater treatment plant, and these are figured into the furniture fixtures, equipment for those facilities. So we're taking these funds out of the bond funds that we use, that we issued to build these plants and equip them, so that's how we're funding it.
Thank you. Council, questions for Mr. Kaufman or staff? No? Do I hear a motion to approve item 7.1, to buy the two SkyTrak telehandlers as described here?
So moved.
Mr. Rodriguez makes a motion. Mr. Corgan made the motion. Mr. Rodriguez, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay? Okay. And when will those be here? It's been approved 6-0. When will those be here?
One of them is already in place in Houston with the Byboard project. They will be able, Kirby Smith will be able to deliver it probably within about 10 days.
Excellent.
And the other one, while it's not necessary right now, we expect it within a month or two.
Excellent. Okay. Let's move to 7.2. Was there other? No. 7.2's Consider Awarding Bid Number 24-25-10 for East Wastewater Treatment Plant Waterline Extension to EGW Services LLC, and that's in the amount of $459,319, along with a 10% contingency of $45,935. We're gonna authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city and adopt ordinance number 25-50, amending the operating budget for the Enterprise Capital Project Fund for fiscal year 24-25. This is two, this will be two motions, correct? Okay. So we'll have two motions on this after discussion. Mr. Kaufman?
I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Chester Nolan, one more time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an 8-inch water line that was included in the actual purchase price of the property for the east wastewater plant. It's been in the mill for some time, and we are ready to move forward with it. We advertised for bids. There were 11 bidders on this project. The low bidder did not have good review, and the folks that, EGW Services, we have investigated their background, and they've come up with a good recommendation. This is a water line that will come in from the east side of the plant and move around, and finally, there's a, I believe there's a map in your booklet tonight, and it will tie in on 377. At current time, there would not be any tie-ins, but that was part of the deal when the property was purchased, was that we would put that pipeline in. So this is just fulfilling the conditions of the purchase price.
And also, we need the water line for the plant.
Well, yeah.
Part of it.
We have, we have a need for water for the plant, absolutely, so.
Very good. Council, other questions, clarification, anything?
Chris Hay is here, who is the designer of this particular pipeline, if you have any questions about that. questions about that.
I did, when you mentioned the eight-inch, is that big enough?
I'm sorry?
You mentioned that it's an eight-inch line.
Yes, sir.
Is that big enough?
I think so.
Let's let Chris talk.
Okay.
The answer is yes. It's big enough to support the plant and the development around it, and that was part of the agreement with the developer as part of the purchase price as well. So we meet the conditions of that contract, and it'll support what we need it to support, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yep.
All right. I see no other questions. Do I have a motion to award bid number 24-25-1 for the east wastewater treatment plant waterline extension to EGW Services, amount of $459,000 plus the contingency of $49,935?
So moved.
Mr. Oberdehr makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Allem, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That passes six and oh. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 25-50, amending the operating budget for the Enterprise Capital Project Fund for fiscal year 2425?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Corgan makes a second. You have to turn your red light on down there.
It is.
Oh, it is. I see. All right. Mr. Corgan makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That has passed six and oh as well.
I would like to add one comment...
Go ahead.
...just to make sure that the public knows that these funds are being used and taken from the impact fee fund. And so this is for growth. This is a project that's growing, and so that's why we were able to spend those funds on that project, so.
And I'm going to go back and talk about our delightful state legislature this year that decided that they wanted to put limits on our impact fees as well. We weren't at those high, high rates that it has affected us now, but the idea is still not palatable. So, next item is executive session. I now declare that the Granberry City Council is convened into open session, that all members are present. City council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. 551071 is consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. 551072 is deliberation regarding real property. 551074 is personnel matter with city manager's contract. 551087 is deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. So we are now into executive session. Thank you. All right, gentlemen, now reconvene. I now declare that the Granberry City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session. All council members are present. Gentlemen, anything that we had to rank for?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. There being no further business, I announce the meeting adjourned.